Good evening, welcome and thank you for joining us. We're going to call to meet, to order the board meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for April 20th, 2020. Roll call please.
Dr. Akbar?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
President.
Ms. Autry?
Here.
Mr. Bravo?
David, are you good?
Here.
Yes, I'm good.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Here.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Here.
Joining us, we're going to call- Thank you. And we also have with us, from Kenmore Garfield High School, our student board member Chandler Forshi. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. If everyone could, if everyone could please mute, we're going to ask Chandler to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So Chandler, you're not going to want to mute. But if everyone else can mute, whenever you're ready Chandler, we can go ahead and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of America.
And to the- One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you so much Chandler. We appreciate that. And with that, we are going to open it up for any community or school reflections. If you'd like to start, please also I'll be paying attention to the chat. So give me a hand wave or let me know that you'd like to say something. Would anyone like to start? Hearing none, we'll ask- Okay Lisa, go ahead.
I just wanted to let folks know, I know Patrick, you were tagged in this earlier. I'm not sure if anyone else was. I did see that in honor of the class, the senior class, that Mrs. Marcus Kearns is going to turn the lights on at the Ellett Stadium this evening. I believe it was at eight o'clock. I want to look at my notes real quick. That seems rude, but from eight to eight twenty?
Eight twenty for twenty-
Oh, she's turning it on at eight twenty for twenty minutes for the class. And also for those who, you know, are losing their spring sports this year. It's just a show of solidarity. Just wanted to let folks know that was going to happen. And also, there will be, I'll give board members some details. I'll send you an email if you'd like to attend. There's going to be a memorial drive by tomorrow with students from Firestone for Mr. Spack, who I know is in our personnel tonight to, on his passing. He was the robotics and physics teacher at Firestone High School. And we're going to be doing a drive through his neighborhood. Kaiga Falls Police are being kind enough to give us an escort tomorrow. So if you'd like to be a part of that, I will send you the information on that as well. He was a fantastic human being and a wonderful teacher. So he's going to be sorely missed. And his wife Mary is a secretary for us at Firestone as well. So they are definitely APS family. And so our hearts go out to them and to all the students who have had him. And honestly, I feel most sorry for the students who, who were looking forward to having him, who won't.
Thank you for that. Ms. Autry?
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge a few community partners who helped support our students over the spring break with meals. Your pizza shop, which I believe they were doing it even while we were still in session, as well as social aid and there, I'm sure several others, but I know a few of them were really supporting our students over the break. And I just wanted to acknowledge them and thank them for that support.
Thank you.
Their pizza's good too. Their pizza's really good.
Yeah, their food is very good. We've ordered from there since we've been in quarantine. It's excellent. Thank you for that Diana. Bruce, yes, go ahead. And that's a topic that we've actually been discussing. And Superintendent, you may want to jump in on this as well.
Okay, two, two things. First of all, I want to give our condolences to, to Robert Way, who was a teacher at North High School, was a teacher when I was there. And he was a very, very good teacher, the type of teacher that all students wanted to have as their teacher because he was so good with the students and helping them. So condolences to his family as well. And then the other thing was, I was talking to a younger person the other day, and they were asking me a question in reference to graduation this year for our students and where we're going to have anything. And asked me what did I, what I thought about possibly having a virtual graduation for our kids who are graduating this year. I didn't know if that was something we had already started to talk about or maybe consider, but I thought, I think would be a good idea. I don't know exactly how to set it up. And I will go back and talk to this young person again to get more information because what they had, I thought I would, thought I would bring to the table, but I can bring more information a little later when we need to discuss it more further.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, can you update the board on some of the possibilities we were discussing? I believe we still have him, correct?
Hey Patrick, this is Derek. I've got, I've got a community reflection when, when you get back around to me.
Okay, thanks.
So we have a couple of people who are on a phone conference tomorrow with Jostens to talk about virtual graduations. They have a, some ideas about that. And depending on social distancing rules, we are holding some dates with the John S. Knight Center for in-person graduations. But we have to see if we can actually, you know, have it where we can get our kids in there safely, limit the number of tickets and have some social distancing. So we're working through both of those options now. And we'll have some additional information a little later, since now we know our schools will be doing virtual learning through the end of the school year.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, let's go with MJ and then with Derek.
Okay, so I just want to say that we've, I have, I'm sure all of us have received a lot of communications from different sources about different issues around us going to virtual learning due to COVID. One of the things that I thought I wanted to mention is that I had the opportunity to attend the Ward Eight meeting on last Wednesday. And they asked for update on our schools. And basically, I just gave them the highlights from the daily COVID reports, which comes out every day clearly. And they actually mentioned how helpful those daily COVID reports were. And just the, they, a lot of people were just very complimentary around the way we've handled this crisis and the way we've supported our students during this time, as well as our staff. So I just wanted to mention that as that was, those are some community reflections and thoughts, at least at the Ward Eight meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. Dr. Hall?
Yeah, thank you. So I also, you know, that was a very moving comment that Lisa gave of Mr. Spack. I also, and I would echo every word, you know, multiple neighbors of mine have, their kids had him, or looking forward to having him at Firestone. You know, but I also don't want to be, I think, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't also acknowledge the loss of Emily Gifford over at Stewart Learning Center. You know, I happen to know her, you know, a bit outside the APS realm. And I know that she was beloved over at Stewart. I believe she was a teacher of the, a teacher of the year at one point in our building, you know, and she was very active in the community, really avid runner, beloved by our students. And so again, you know, I, again, I wanted us to acknowledge Emily Gifford's passing as well. Definitely happened, you know, happened before her time. And then secondly, I got to come back to Mr. Way over at North, that I believe Mr. Alexander, Ms. Mansfield referenced. You know, as a, as a fellow North graduate, I happened to have in my senior year for, for, for American government. And I, to be candid with you, you know, there's still some views of mine today on, on the role of government that were shaped in part by Mr. Way. And so he was at North High School from, you know, those of you keeping score, he was at North High School from, from nineteen sixty-five to nineteen ninety-nine. You know, so, I mean, the man was, the man, the myth, the legend was that, that was Mr. Bob Way. So, so wanted to, wanted to make sure that we acknowledged him in a very robust way as well. And, you know, so those are, those are my comments. And then, you know, just sort of echo, you know, the, the comments that, that Dr. Akbar made just a minute ago about those daily COVID updates that APS is putting out. You know, I think they've been very helpful. And then also too, I've gotten some feedback from some folks in some of the buildings. And to Dr. McWilliams Woods, you know, I just wanted to pass along to you in a, in a public setting, how happy the teachers and parents are that I've talked to thus far about, about how the online learning is going. You know, so, so again, you know, I want to share that. And then to Dr. James as well, you know, some of the comments I've got in the community is, you know, they've been very, very happy and impressed, you know, as per usual, sir, with your leadership. So I wanted to say thank you again for that. You know, so I think it's important in these settings to, to make sure that we're being kind and, and sort of sharing the positive feedback because there's so much negative going on right now. So I, again, just want to make sure that we're sharing the positives as well. So again, just want to say thank you to Dr. James, Dr. McWilliams, and, and, you know, Doc, you know, you know, as well as Mr. Pennant. I appreciate, you know, your collective leadership and, and all that you're doing for our students and our teachers in our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Anyone else? If not Chandler, we'd love to hear from you if you have an update. And we'd love to hear how you're doing during quarantine.
Okay. For anyone who doesn't know, my name is Chandler Forshi. I'm a junior at Kenmore Garfield High School, and I'm in the IT pathway. For the students' side of things, due to the coronavirus outbreak, I don't know how many people want to admit it. But the student body and like myself included, we've realized the value of the in-class, in-person learning experience. It's just a lot different now. And we realize how much we miss it, but you know, we never really show it. The structure of the school day I know is missed by many students, and especially the ones who have to make time or find time to do schoolwork. So we just, it, as much as we put on that we hated school and the school building, we really do miss it. I, I do know, like, for example, academically, I'm like seventh in my class. And sometimes I miss having the ability to raise my hand and have a teacher come over and explain something. Like if I don't get it or I need some more explanation. And it's just, it's kind of just a lot to think about with how much things have changed so quickly. But at least we're, we're moving through it. I was able to communicate with some of my teachers through Remind and Google Classroom. So that's a good sign. It's a good thing that we can still reach out as much as possible. I do know however, some students, and I worry for students, who may have challenges learning new concepts and take a little bit longer to understand things. You know, they might rely on these in-person interactions with their teachers and they just can't find it anymore. So I can't really like imagine the amount of pressure that they're going through. But hopefully, we can all get through this and, you know, stay ahead of our classwork and our assignments. And so I just worry for those, those people. But and right before spring break, I was able to speak with my assistant principal, Ms. Copeland. We discussed about teachers communicating, about workloads, and the assignments that they'll assign for students to do. So we don't get overwhelmed while trying to balance school life, home life, you know, because we have responsibilities here, and we have responsibilities for school while doing it ourselves. So it's, it's a little bit of a, little bit of a hurdle, I would say. But we can, we can get through this. Let's see. And I think it would be a good practice for all the teachers in the district to like communicate. So they, they don't overflow or flood the workload. I know students have had a lot of questions, and I'm sure there's many more that I haven't heard. But one major question students is asking for right now is more information about the grading scale and eligibility to pass. It's kind of like a gray area right now. We don't really know much. I know the best ways to probably get information out to all of us and the parents is through all calls, the Facebook page, and emails. That'd be whenever we have updates about things like that. I know all the students, well, not all, but most of the students are watching the news to see what the governor comes out with. Like coming back to school, we heard today, the rest of the year will just be online for safety precautions. Things like that. I know compared to online, most students would prefer to go back to the building if it was safe, of course. But, you know, it's quarantine time. It's, the outbreak is still going on, and we all need to stay safe. So it's better this way. I do know on the topic of returning to school, today my fellow board members, the student board members that is, Monisha Ray, Luke Buckingham, Salam Said, and I participated in a Google conference with Joshua Allen, the coordinator of Student Services to provide our expertise in, or on, on ways to get students to want to attend school and classes with incentives and things like that. We, we were asked to go out via social media and kind of share with people that we know, even adults, doesn't have to be all the kids, but to try to just see what would motivate them, want to get them to participate right now. And even when we go back to school, because the attendance rates like aren't what we want to be. So it's a great, it's a great idea with this campaign. I really like it. And we're able to put our feedback in so they get exactly what the students want. I know my first, you know, gosh, I can't think of it. My first offer or idea was LED light strips. I don't know if anybody has heard of them here. But what you do, you know, you put them around your room, they change colors, they light everything up real nice. And they switch modes and do all that. You guys can put them in your office. It's great. Love to see that in one of these calls. All you guys lighting up your rooms, different colors. And it's just, when the, in the quarantine life for me, it's, it's been pretty, it's been pretty, pretty good, pretty smooth. A little bit of bump with stress and everything, but it all kind of pans out. Luckily, I'm not fully alone. I have a seven person family to spend time with. So we've played many five hour games of Monopoly and things like that. And we've had many feuds over who's going to win what game, who's going to do what next, and who can make the best artwork. We've been doing that a lot too, making a lot of art because we're all very bored at times. And we also like to do dinner when my mom gets home, and she arrived from work a little bit ago. So I'm going to have to wrap up and leave. But on behalf of the student board members, we wish health to all the APS students and all the board members and the families in the Akron community.
Thank you Chandler. We wish you and your family good health and safety as well. Enjoy dinner and thank you for taking time tonight to join us.
Well, wait, I'm sorry, Mr. President. If I, if I could just ask one question of, of Mr. Forshi. So I, I have to ask, so who was winning most of these Monopoly games? I just have to know, like who's the house champion?
I do me.
That's you. Okay, all right, okay.
Six hour game. I won the comeback. I, at one point in time, I had two dollars left. I came back and won.
Okay. All right. Because Monopoly is a game that is near and dear to my heart as well, sir. So congratulate, congratulations on your, on your dominance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
All right. Bye Chandler. Thank you.
All right. We have no request to address the board tonight. Our next order of business is approval of the previous meeting minutes from the regular meeting of April 6, 2020, and also from the special meeting of April 10, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. McKittrick and a second from Mr. Alexander. Are there any comments, question or discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
All right. Superintendent's recommendations, personnel?
Mr. President, I have a request to pull item five from the Personnel Recommendations for Discussion in Executive Session, and then come out of Executive Session to vote on that particular item.
Thank you.
Other than that, on the balance of our Personnel Recommendations, I'm recommending approval of the recommendations presented in categories now six through sixteen.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Mansfield and a second from Dr. Akbar. Any comments, question or discussion on Personnel Recommendations? Hearing none, roll call please.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category twenty-one.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion from Ms. McKittrick, a second from Mr. Alexander. Any comments, question or discussion on the consent agenda item?
Just briefly, Patrick?
Yes.
I just wanted to make mention of, you know, and again, in all this time of unfortunate news and sad news and bad news, seeing the resolution to accept the two grants for North, for the on-the-table grants, those were pretty competitive and those were county, almost county wide. They had to serve the city. But there, there were so many people that applied for those. So kudos to those who applied. And I can't wait to see what fruit those bear.
Thank you.
Ms. Mansfield, I'm sorry. Mr. President, I missed the first part of what, what Ms. Mansfield said. I think, I'm not sure if it was her internet connection or mine, but she, she kind of paused there. I didn't hear the first probably ten seconds.
Sorry about that. I was talking about the Akron Community Foundation grants that are in those resolutions that went to North. Those are just, I know, I'm, I'm sure all of us had some participation in the last two years in on-the-table event. And the grants that got afterwards are pretty competitive. So it's, it's pretty impressive that North got those. And I can't wait to see what happens.
So I've actually, I have a follow-up question to that, to that topic, if I may. So, so, you know, the, the grant, for example, to North, you know, is it sort of delegated to the building principal to kind of figure out sort of how to operationalize the grant? Or is there something that they, that ACF kind of lays out as far as what they have to sort of do to satisfy the grant requirements?
I believe that ACF will outline some of the requirements for them to successfully complete the grant.
Okay, Roger that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yeah.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in category twenty-three.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the Business Affairs Recommendations?
Still move.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Ms. McKittrick. Any comments, question or discussion on Business Affairs Agenda Items?
So since I'm on a good news kick today, I wanted to also point out the, I'm just looking for every crumb here right now. Money from the Department of Job and Family Services that's going to hotspots. And then if you look through, through the donations today, so many of those were to help provide internet and hotspots to our students. So what a great community we live in that people are thinking about that. I mean, we've seen, we're seeing it everywhere, but it's just lovely to see today. Again, just a day when we're looking for some bright spots. It's nice to see those today.
Thank you. Any other comments, question or discussion on the Business Affairs Recommendations? Hearing none, roll call please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Yes. So I wanted to just briefly talk about remaining close for the balance of our school year. We've already have, you know, migrated to online instruction and will, you know, continue to work through that. I was on a phone call Saturday with approximately thirteen, fourteen other superintendents with the governor, you know, talking about this, you know, really for, I think, most of the superintendents on the call, you know, our belief was because some districts in their school year, as early as May fourteenth, many in before Memorial Day, and we happen to end on June fourth, thought that, you know, in many ways, it would be counterproductive to restart, to come back in person. While we still have to maintain social distancing, many of the issues were about, you know, kids on school buses. And some of our buses, we might have three kids in a seat. And, you know, the fact of kids coming into school, you know, in the cafeteria, our buildings were designed according to the Ohio School Facilities Design Manual, the Ohio School Design Manual. You know, we have to serve about a third of the population in the cafeteria. And many of our larger schools, that's well over, you know, a hundred kids in a fairly confined space. So I think the governor is at the point where he really wants us to think about how we're going to restart school in the fall. And so I know there are several groups that are working with Ohio Department of Education, representatives from the governor's office, the state associations to try and figure that out. And our duty is to come up with some ideas that we can pass along. So, you know, long term, we want to make sure that, you know, our public is safe, our students are safe, our staff are all safe, and that, you know, we can really get back to the business of making sure that our kids are being educated in a safe and secure environment. The other thing the governor really pressed upon us was, you know, we do have some very fragile students with frag, you know, with medical needs. And we have to make sure that we're taking those students into account as well. So yes, we're focusing on some issues with graduation and things like that. But we're also, a group of us are looking forward to what the fall might bring, and let alone what we might have to do in the summer to help some of our students get caught up or to make up credits and things like that. So it's really, you know, all hands on deck trying to figure out all of these things. So I just wanted to give you that brief update.
Thank you. And I'm going to keep my report pretty short. It's funny that I've never found myself in so many extra conversations throughout the week about everything Akron Public- Public Schools, but also feel like my report needs to be so small. I agree with the superintendent, and I'm glad, I know that the news today coming out of the governor's office may be difficult for some parents who may also find themselves being called back to work to understand that their kids are going to be learning from home remotely the rest of the year, but I think it was the right call, and I think our focus is where it should be, which is on getting our kids back to school safely in the fall, whatever that looks like. I also want to echo the sentiments of a couple of our board members in thanking our community partners the last several weeks, helping us to distribute food and make sure that our kids have what they need. We really appreciate all of the support. I also want to thank our board members. I hear great things from people stopping out at meal sites just to check in and say hello to all of the emails and the phone calls and the things that you're handling throughout this crisis. Thank you for all the work that you're doing as well. Treasurers' report?
A couple items, and then I'll defer the rest for Finance Committee, who I believe are going to talk about the post audit. As Superintendent mentioned, we are keeping an eye on post-COVID spending with the Finance Committee. We've looked at just a few of those early indications about how much money we're spending on supplies and materials. Some items have been under budget and some, as you can imagine, are coming in over budget as it relates to technology and hotspots and those kind of things. So those are of importance as we get ready for the five-year forecast coming up in May. And so this will be one of the more unique five-year forecasts I think I've ever done in my career, and I will need all of your help, administration's help on putting that together so that we make the appropriate assumptions heading into the fall for potential levy campaign, for state budget reductions, and then the areas that were over and under on the budget. So this will be a really interesting time as we put together a budget for next year. We received a lot of questions, both from our stakeholders and from the media regarding the CARES Act, regarding any federal support and/or state support, and the Superintendent and I are monitoring that daily. We do not have any firm direction on the actual amount and where those dollars can be spent. Be sure that we'll bring that back to the board for discussion in patching some of the holes in the budget that the team has created. And as mentioned earlier, I know Finance Committee is going to talk about the post audit, and I have some other comments during that section. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll jump right into committee reports then. Legal contracts and board policy?
We have no report, but we are meeting, scheduled to meet on the 27th, which is next Monday, so we'll have something after that meeting.
Thank you. Finance and Capital Management?
Yeah, hey, yeah, so as Ryan, as Mr. Pendleton just referenced, you know, we had our audit call with the Auditor of State's office, and I'd be very candid, I mean, it was very impressive. I mean, you know, they, as the auditors told us in very clear terms, this is, you know, probably, this was the best possible performance that a district can have, you know, on an audit. And so I just want to, I'll defer to Ms. Autry to add, if she's got anything to add as well, but really, I think this is really kind of the time to kind of say kudos to our treasurer and his team for the work that they've done. You know, because again, and I even asked a question on the call with the state, I said, well, how commonly do school districts, you know, score this A-plus level of review? They were very candid, saying it just, it almost never happens, you know, and so, so again, you know, I just want to thank, you know, our CFO, treasurer and his team for all their hard work. And I'll defer to Ms. Autry, she's got other comments to make.
Yeah, I would just like to piggyback on that, you know, just speaking as a layperson, you know, the average person doesn't have a $500 million budget, so just to really see, you know, us coming out with a very clean audit is appreciated. So again, thanks. And again, just educating people because I'm learning along the way, because you think a district is big, how can everything be perfect? So while it's a very clean audit, I did appreciate that management letter, which is actually just, I guess, comments and recommendations, not necessarily tied to our finances, but things that we could probably work on. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, and that when things, my understanding, if I'm not, if I'm correct, anything that goes above or beyond five to seven percent, I guess, outside of a line item, are included in the financial report, or just so people know, I think that's the case. So that's, you know, good for me to know and learn with a district this size. And then also in the management letters, just, you know, some IT things, I believe we're working on all of those things. So, but again, it was really just an eye-opener and appreciation for managing a district this size. So thanks again, Mr. Pendleton, and to your team.
Yeah, and yeah, if I could just weigh into that, to add to Ms. Autry's point, I mean, you know, when you think about sort of the, as far as educating folks who may be tuning in, right, I mean, you know, you know, they do employ the GAAP methodology, G-A-A-P methodology, and, you know, while there are, you know, twelve, as are called twelve principles, there are four key principles, you know, that really, really apply here around prudence and consistency, materiality, and objectivity. And what Ms. Autry sort of mentioned around that five to seven percent, probably, really speaks to materiality. There was nothing of, you know, there was nothing material that was found to be, you know, in error or with our, with our audit. And so, so again, I think that, to Ms. Autry's point, you know, it's well taken, you know, you know, just the hard work that was put in by Mr. Pendleton and his team, and I think, you know, it was very educational for Ms. Autry and myself as we sort of walked through our first audit, you know, at the state level. And so I think, I think we both learned a lot from it, because again, you know, five hundred, you know, five hundred million dollar, you know, annual budgets are not, are not commonplace. So again, just want to thank, thank for ensuring that we had to honor people on the line, right? I mean, like, that, you know, that was, that was a huge plus as well. We had, there were probably what, what were there, Ms. Autry, what, four people that were on the line from the auditor's office that were all kind of taking turns, kind of explaining and sort of walking through different things, and that was all set up by Mr. Pendleton to ensure that the, that the board representatives on the finance really were able to understand what was going on. So, so again, kudos, kudos to, you know, to you and your team, Mr. Pendleton.
Thanks so much. I would, I would add to that as we're, I really appreciate Dr. Hall, Ms. Autry, talking about educating the public. So let me give you some quick fiscal highlights to the audit, especially thanking the staff. So I will recognize the staff at some future board meeting via maybe a resolution or a memo from me, but they deserve the support and kudos for this. As mentioned, this is just under a $600 million budget. There's more than 100,000 line items in that budget. Payroll processed almost 5,000 W-2s for a gross salary amount of almost 200 million. Accounts payable and receivables posted over 32,000 invoices and vouchers, and we've paid out in fiscal nineteen about 162 million to vendors with an exceptionally low error rate. And kind of to finish and wrap up from my perspective on an audit, the word audit can carry negative connotations with it, but the process for the public is very necessary and useful. I think the public can rest a little bit better knowing that it's not just the treasurer, it's not just the board that's reviewed, and of course, we have 150-plus years of experience in managing those money, and we take it very seriously. Having an outside agency like the Ohio Auditor of State and their methods coming in to make sure that our financial information is accurate, it meets district goals, it aligns with the five-year forecast, I think people can rest a little bit better knowing that the majority of our revenue comes from our local taxpayers. So again, it's not taking the treasurer's word for it. It's, it's a way of getting a clean bill of financial health and having it stated from a statewide agency like the Auditor of State. So I, thanks for that, Tia.
Good, thank you. And just, you know, want to throw in on the pile there, I'm picking up a little, a bit of Lisa's good news vibe. I just want to say kudos also and echo the sentiments from Diana and from Dr. Hall. Congratulations on another good audit. I think this is my eighth or ninth one, and as the auditors pointed out, this is probably the second time in those eight or nine years, and we've actually been together with a few of those auditors almost that entire time. This is like the second year that we've had this high or this clean of an audit, and I appreciate Diana's point too, that, you know, it doesn't mean that we're absolutely perfect. There's always room for improvement, and we improve where we can, and we will. But as you said, Mr. Pendleton, I think the public can rest assured that we are managing their finances effectively. So thank you for, for all of that. Instructional policy and student achievement?
Hello, yes. I have a very quick shout-out. The National Association of Music Merchants Foundation, in cooperation with researchers at the Music Research Institute at the University of Kansas, has selected the Akron Public Schools K-12 Music Program as one of the best communities for music education. And thanks to the leadership of Dr. James, our Fine Arts Learning Specialist, Don Wilson, and all of our music educators across the district, bravo to them. The music program has continued to receive high marks based on the criteria that include funding allocated for music education, staffing of highly qualified teachers, commitment to standards, and access to music instruction. So again, congratulations to all our music educators across the district. Bravo.
I've got some more, Patrick, because we're busy.
Yes, go ahead. Did we lose someone? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Patrick.
We can't hear Lisa.
All right, let's give Lisa. All right, let's give Lisa a moment to reconnect. We'll momentarily retest until she's back.
So regarding Monopoly, you know, I mean, I want to get on the board, chessboard, monopoly board, connect four board, I mean, I'll just, I'm ready whenever any of you are. Checkers, not so much, but, yeah. So since we're in recess, waiting for Ms. Mansfield to join, I forgot, just insert those thoughts into the public record.
I'd like to have a virtual game of Monopoly with Chandler.
Yeah, I'd love to, I would have loved to have seen this, seen the game when he came back from only having two dollars left, and he came back and won. You know, I, yeah, I definitely would have liked to have seen that game replayed for my benefit. That must have been something to see.
Those kind of resources, we may have our next treasurer CFO.
Roger that, Roger that.
Sorry about that. I don't know where I went.
That's okay, Lisa. We took a momentary recess while you were gone. We'll come back to session and go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay. Did I cut out as soon as I pulled up my script? That's probably where I cut out, right?
Yes.
Our internet has just been glitchy today. My poor husband was in a Facebook Live with Kent State and went without earlier, so I don't know why. I think we're overwhelming it. Too many people are streaming in my house at once. I was giving a shout-out to our curriculum folks who are going to be sending you, I'm pulling it up on my phone, so I don't have to pull it up on my surface at the same time. I apologize for the delay, so, because I tried to do both to make it do too many things at once. Okay, so watch for an email from Ruth Hotchkiss, our math learning specialist. She's going to send out a voiceover PowerPoint to all of the board members so that you'll be able to take a look at the materials that we usually display outside the boardroom and get a hands-on taste. This way you can do it safely from home, and we will vote to adopt those materials on May 18th. Also, while I'm at it, I wanted to give a shout-out to the folks who'd worked on the 2122 calendar. I know that seems like forever from now, but I forgot to do that when we did consent. Also, to Howard Lawson and his tech staff for making over 1,250 phone calls in the past two weeks to double-check with families to make sure they had internet connections, and to Dan Rambler and the security staff for delivering meals and for delivering the hotspots as people needed them. And then last, even though he will hate it, I want to give a big shout-out to our superintendent. You know, he just casually mentioned that he was on the governor's call on Saturday, and when we texted him earlier, we're like, they're deciding about schools. He was kind of like, yeah, I know. But the reason that, you know, he plays that down, but we know from little birds telling us that he's literally on the phone with the state superintendent, the deputy superintendent of the governor, like, every other day, and that he's viewed as being student-centered, pragmatic, and this district is viewed as being physically strong because of his leadership. So I wanted to just give him a pat on the back, even though we can't do it in person. I know that you don't usually like to get acknowledged, Mr. Superintendent, but this is something no one's ever done before, and unlike some people who stand up there and beat their chest and talk about how great they are, you don't do that. So I wanted to do that for you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we have no unfinished business. We have no new business to come before the board. So unless there's anything else, Mr. Superintendent, I think we are ready for executive session. Okay.
Yes.
So with that, then, we need, I will be looking for a motion pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G1 to consider the employment and compensation of public employees or officials of the district.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Autry and a second from Mr. Alexander. Any comments, questions, or discussion before we head into executive session? Once we do roll call, of course, we'll log out of this session. We'll log into the executive session that's been set up. Please make sure to completely log out of this session when you do so, and then when we finish executive, you can access this meeting again by going to your calendar invite. Roll call, please. Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. We are back in regular session for our board meeting on April 20, 2020. We have one item of business before the board, before we adjourn, and that is Resolution 20-053, a resolution to maintain payroll for certain classifications of employees during school closure due to COVID-19.
And actually, Mr. President, there are two items. We'll also have to do, recommendation number five from personnel.
Thank you. So for that resolution, do we have a motion?
So move.
We have a motion from Mr. Alexander and a second from Mr. Akbar. Are there any comments, question, or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Mrs. Mansfield? You're muted.
Sorry, wasn't ready. Yes.
Yeah, something's on fire. We heard that.
Yes. Yeah, something is actually on fire. I apologize.
Okay, we're.
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Thank you.
And on item 5.1 from the personnel recommendations, are you ready for that, Mr. Superintendent?
It's actually, um, I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in category five.
Category five, thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved. So moved.
Motion from Ms. McKittrick, and I heard, uh, Ms. Mansfield, uh, first, so second. Any comments, question, or discussion on that personnel recommendation? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other business to come before this board for this agenda?
I do have a quick question for Dr. James, if I could. So I know before, uh, our spring break, you had mentioned that, uh, you were gonna be looking at our, uh, how we've been distributing the meals and maybe retooling some things. I was just wondering if, uh, there were any adjustments that came out of that or any takeaways or changes that might have come about after looking at it?
Right. The big thing was making sure that, you know, we were doing proper, uh, social distancing at the distribution site. Um, making sure that, you know, we're providing, uh, personal protective equipment, masks and gloves. And then the other one, um, was there was a concern brought up about Summit, Summit Lake and, uh, some issues with meal distribution there. And I'd really like to give a shout out to Malcolm Costa and Community Action and Brian Gage from AMHA because they've collaborated, ask, uh, um, uh, apply to the Ohio Department of Education to get approval to, uh, be a meal distribution site. They have a kitchen at the Reach Opportunity Center. AMHA is supporting that. So meals are being served out of Reach Opportunity Center, which really helps with, uh, issues that, well, we were seeing in Summit Lake area. And as of today, I believe we distributed 9,300 meals.
Good, thank you. And I'm sure at least I know Angela and I were both getting, uh, concerns from folks in the Summit Lake neighborhood. So, uh, big appreciation to Dan Rice from the Ohio and Erie Canalway Coalition, who I know is collecting communications. And I'm sure you have some shout-outs. Thank you to our partners, uh, as well.
Yeah, they, um, yeah, and also, um, thanks to Swag for the work they've done, uh, even before we got to Reach Center and helping to deliver food to, uh, individuals who live in AMHA housing and outside, but in that neighborhood. So, uh, thank you to them, um, as well as even Congress, uh, Councilwoman or Council President, uh, Margot Somerville. I, I, I think that this Reach Center is centrally located. Everyone knows where it is. And it will be, um, a good location, I believe, for that, that area. So thank you.
Especially now that we can kind of hit both sides of the lake there, so very important. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Anything else to come before the board? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn. We, second, all in favor, signify, signify by sign.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Same sign? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Bye.
Thank you.